Make sure he's there.
It's six o'clock, if you don't mind. You'll let everybody know it's six o'clock.
I'm gonna have to leave, I got a call. Nobody was getting a call for all day.
Alrighty, it's six o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting of May the 18th. And I'll call the meeting to order. And Mike has offered to do the pledge and Steve is going to do the prayer for us. So if everybody stand, please.
Pledge your allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic, in which we stand, one nation, indivisible, limited and just as one.
Our every father, we come to you at the close of another day. We're so thankful for the many blessings that you provide all of us each day. And as we come here and all and want to pour what to do good for the city, we just ask that you'll be with us, guide and direct us. And we just thank you for all the blessings that you keep strolling upon us.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, roll call, please, ma'am.
Captain Loretta?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Bill White?
Here.
Oh, Willie Alderson?
Here.
And Eric?
Martin?
Here.
All present accounted for. Number four, approval and correction of minutes from prior meetings. You've got two sets, our study session of April the 15th and the regular meeting of April the 20th. After you've had a chance to review, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, if it's not known, I'll make a motion to approve the study session of April the 15th, 2021, and the regular meeting, April the 20th, 2021.
We have a motion, do we have any, do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, awards, presentations and appointment, mayor's appointment to the Mount Pleasant Communication Committee, and that is going to be Ms. Carla Emmett, correct?
Correct.
Uh, anything you'd like to say?
Uh, just love Ms. Carla and what she stands for in Mount Pleasant. She's a longtime resident and she is very active in our community. Yeah, I know particularly any girl, that's, any girl sports she's involved in.
Good deal. Alright, uh, we don't need a motion on that, do we?
We do.
We do, okay.
I move that we accept Ms. Carla as the newest member of the Mount Pleasant Communication Committee.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number six, A, ordinance, 2021-1070. This is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee lowering the speed limit on Main Street.
Mayor Commissioners, this is getting the speed limit at 25 to the Shell Station, then 30 to William's Funeral Home, and then 45, um, all the way outside the city limits. And we do have the state's digital sign lined up for later this month to let people know changing the speed limit.
Awesome.
Probably go into effect after the final reading?
It can go into effect 15 days after the final reading. But we usually try and educate before.
Yeah, we, maybe, yeah, because you missed one lady, Mike, I don't remember.
No, I was saying.
Okay, because we're, my big thing was making sure we get it posted.
Yeah, I didn't make the start of the meeting.
That's right, that's right. I just didn't want us to not be able to get it posted. I can just start handing out tickets.
I understand that.
Alright, that is a public hearing and a final reading. Uh, does anyone in the audience care to speak on it? Please let the minutes reflect, no one did. Entertain a motion.
Move that we accept, uh, ordinance 2021-1070 as presented.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. B, ordinance 2021-1071. This is a public hearing and a final reading on this as well. An ordinance considering a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding a requested amendment to Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein. And this is designed road property that a smelter service had requested.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this went through the Planning Commission and they denied their request to, to make that change. And so this is in front of you for second reading to, uh, confirm their decision or take any changes.
On our four statements, I guess, which I think Kate, you even said that the, and I don't know how we can go about changing it. The, I guess, were they putting cars or whatever up there?
The tow lot kind of in front of it?
Yes, yes, you made a statement that, you know, that wasn't even supposed to be there.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any way that we can do something to reverse that?
So, uh, it was approved in October before I started the following February. And, uh, what we were able to do is go back and say, you're there, but these are going to be conditions of you being there. And there are certain conditions, they had to put the, uh, they had to make the fence, a fence that you couldn't see through. So the only thing we could really do is revisit, are they, um, are they taking care of those, um, conditions? If they're not taking their conditions, then we can go out there and cite them for that.
Okay, but I just, I guess, you know, when we have to go by these things here, you know, I just want to bring stuff up, you know?
But they are going to put the fence up? The fence is up.
Fence is up.
It's been up, yeah, it's just, it just looks real bad right now.
But the other thing, you know, there was people that live out there that doesn't want this. So, you know, it's my opinion, you know, most of the time, you know, people living in that area doesn't want it, you know, I'm on a vote against it. And I'm, you know, I'm just, and it's hard to vote against the Planning Commission, you know?
Alright. Well, the Planning Commission voted not to let that happen.
Right, that's why I'm saying it's hard.
It is a denial by the planning.
But that was because of all the people that came in from that area and didn't want it there. Because the conflict was, is that you're not telling us for sure what you're gonna, what you're gonna put there. That was the problem.
Right, and, and none of the residents could ever remember it being anything but agricultural.
Right.
Yeah.
That's all I remember being.
But I know how things like that can get changed.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and then we have very few records.
Living proof.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I lived out there, I'm saying it was agriculture then, so.
The mayor, with that, you know, I make the motion to deny, but, oh, I'm sorry.
It's public, you know, you're cool, thank you for giving. Alright, this is a public hearing and a final reading. Does anyone care to speak to this? Let the minutes reflect, no one did, please? Now we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to on the denial for ordinance 2021-1071.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
You're meaning, you're basically approving the Planning Commission's decision?
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
We're all.
Okay.
On the same page.
I'll say, we have a number of seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. C, ordinance 2021-1072. Again, this is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance considering a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding a requested amendment to Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein. And this is related to North High Street.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is North High Street at First Avenue. Um, there were actually two presented that night. They approved the one that was residential, but this, they were proposing to put mini storage on there and the Planning Commission did deny this.
And once again, the residents came in and did not want a mini storage in the neighborhood because they felt like we had enough of them. And it was several people that was here that came in and spoke about this.
Any other discussion?
Just that it's not for the land use, you know, at least that's my, my thinking. Plus, you know, the residents doesn't want it.
Alright. Anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect, they did not, entertain a motion. Mike's got the paper. Mike's got the yellow paper.
Mayor, I'll make the.
Or orange, I'm sorry.
Motion of, of ordinance 2021-1072 on the request of the Planning Commission, you know, denying the, the land use for the storage.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from mayor. Just think we had a beautiful day for Saturday, thanks to all those that participated. Bedford told me today it sold all the art. Uh, so that's a good day. And, uh, apparently the young lady that came down in one, Bedford said it was quite amazing what she was capable of doing. So that was a, you know, it's a, it's a good start.
Which picture was that?
You'll have to ask Bedford. Okay.
Okay.
And that's all I've got. Number eight, monthly financial and budget report, please, ma'am.
Oh, you received the, y'all, the financial report yesterday, email. Um, the one thing that we do want to point out is that this, this month, we've converted to the new, um, credit card processing. We've had hiccups there, we've worked through them. Um, two of our machines are not, still not working properly, we're working the debt, get those going. But the one thing that we really want to, is, is to stress to the residents is that, with this new credit card processing, you have to set up a, a new account on your road. You have to go out there and set up a new account. And then you will be able to go out and look at your, your bill and look at your account. You can see everything out there on the count. Um, so, but the one thing that is most critical is when you're setting up the account, the account numbers have to have the dashes in them. And the names have to be exact the way they say are on the bill. If they're not, it won't pull.
So if it, if the account shows it's an initial, but you put your first name, it won't find you, yeah?
If your national, if your account puts that you have a middle initial of Z and you don't put it in there, it won't pull it up, it has to be exactly. And while it, and also, Victoria's been helping and the ladies up front have been helping, um, residents get signed up. Um, some that are having problems, most of the ones that have had problems have called in and they've been able to walk them through it. There's been a few, um, that have had some issues. I think Victoria wants to speak on how your, yours was and the issues you had.
Oh, so we have two people on our account. And on our account, we were, it was Bedford's name first, my name last, but it was Smith, Bedford, went next to Victoria instead of, and it had a comma in it. And because it had that comma in it, it was having a hard time finding it. I think I tried it like seven or eight times before I was finally able to find our account. So it's gonna be exactly like it is. If you're having trouble with it, um, they definitely call it credit card, somebody tells you.
It's, there's gonna be some education involved, for sure.
Little, yeah. But if you're on there, you're on there and it is great. And you can also see your property taxes as well, it's not just until.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, you know, like right now, you know, mine's coming out of my checking account, so I still need to.
You don't need to, but you, if you want to look at it.
To look, okay.
I mean, you don't have to make a payment on it, but you go online, you can look, you can set up your own account and you can look.
But I mean, that's what I'm saying, if I set up an account, or do I have to set up a, a new account?
No.
To take it, okay.
It's your existing, yeah.
Okay.
It's a one-time setup.
It's just gotta match what's sent out on the card.
Yeah, whatever your billing shows.
That's why, I'm just saying, I didn't know if I had to put my check number and all that back in there.
No.
You can just go out there and view your, your, uh, account information, um, you know?
Taxes and utilities.
Taxes and utilities. But you don't have to, you don't have to like pay.
If they pay by credit card, it's a fee.
Yes. This is a charge fee. It's, uh, $2 per person, it's $2 or 2.5%, whichever is more.
Each time.
Yeah, for each transaction. That is correct. And one thing that we do stress, that, uh, it also would let you set up a D H, but we here set up bank drafts. Those are no charge. So that's what we try to, you know, if we get, uh, we try to encourage people if they have, uh, they want it to come directly out of their bank account, that, that, that we can set that up here. Uh, not on the online, but through, through up, up front. There's a, you know, form to complete. And that that one is no charge. That, that's just normal bank draft that we've been doing for years. Um, this is just to give the customers an additional option, but there is a fee that the, uh, credit card company does charge.
Alright. Any other questions for Loretta? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Do we accept the, uh, financial budget report as presented?
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday at noon, we're having the grand opening ribbon cutting of the new disc golf in, uh, Gardenia Park. And there'll be hot dogs and some refreshments to the first, uh, 100 they get there. And, uh, that should be a fun day, it looks like we have decent weather so far. Saturday evening, it's not a city event, but there's a second, um, summer series concert, uh, at the Corsi Place on Pleasant Street. The name of the group is Suitcase Soul. I believe they're having a food truck there.
They are.
Yeah. Um, so that is Saturday night. And then I'm gonna let, I'll announce for Chief Hay that in the annual golf tournament over the weekend, uh, Mount Pleasant beat the city of Columbia and the sheriff's office by four strokes. And there's a giant trophy in Chief's office. Of course, he was playing.
Who pulled y'all through is what I want to know.
Team effort.
You bet you did, you play that, it's a team effort. Anything else, Kate?
No, thank you.
Alright. Number 10, special reports from other departments wastewater liaison bars denied. Uh, you take a frisbee and you throw it and it lands in this great big screen, or not great big, it's not a big.
Basket.
Yeah, it's like a basket on a pole.
Come out on Saturday.
Yeah.
And you, you'll have some discs so you can practice throwing them.
You have like a, a driver frisbee. And then you have a, a medium range and then a putter, just like you do. Um, they're, they're, they're slimmer than the regular frisbees that you buy at Walmart or whatever, they're slimmer. Yeah, something like that. They're pretty light.
Alright, wastewater liaison.
So normally I give this report, but Matthew's here for something to be on the agenda, so if you want to comment on it. Uh, you have it in front of you?
Uh, I do.
Okay, good.
It's just a good time or bad time?
Well, I'm, I'm here for the good results from the bid we got, so.
Yeah. He said he hadn't been here in a while, I had to give directions and a few things.
I've been here earlier, but I talked to my parents and they held me up. Parents, stop talking to me. Um, uh, just to, I, I know you guys get this every month and not a whole lot's changed in a while, but just wanted to, uh, answer any questions you might have since I haven't been here in a while. And, um, also just point out a few things that are on this. Um, I know, uh, I think we talked about a few months ago, the sewer trunk line rehab, it's kind of been on hold for some time, the, uh, water levels. Uh, the, unfortunately, the INI that's getting in the system has caused the, the construction to be delayed. Now that we're getting in some months, things should kind of, groundwater should go, levels should go down, less rain, and we should be able to get that work done, I would say, in the next, probably the next month or so. Um, once they get started, it'll, it'll only take them about two, three weeks to get that done, so. Uh, it's just a matter of getting, uh, some favorable weather.
And Matthew, I had a question on that because I've got the change order in front of me for, to give additional time because they lost the time because of the weather.
Right.
Since there's no money that's involved typically, does that just, that can be signed by anybody without going through the commission since it's not an increase or a decrease in funding?
Uh, yeah, my understanding is that, that the mayor can sign it and it doesn't have to go through commission approval because there is no money.
So we went to the state and got additional time because they lost 112 days, they're asking for another 112 days. Um, and that's what this paperwork is about.
Yeah, and, and a lot of reason that we're doing that documentation is that USDA has become uh, more, uh, they're, they're putting more attention on contract time. We've been dealing with that with some other projects, not here in Mount Pleasant necessarily, but some other projects, so in order to kind of stay in their good graces and don't get in an, an argument at the end of the job, we're making sure that we have the contract time that's needed as we go along and not wait till the end and get into a, a shouting match. So that, that's really, that's, that's really why we're doing it now. There may be some additional time we need to add, but it was to kind of go ahead and do what's already been accumulated.
On the trunk line specifically?
Right, exactly. Um, so, any questions about the trunk line project? Okay, I'll, uh, the next two projects on this list, the Rainy Street, uh, sewer improvements, and then the larger, the, the, the third project on here, the larger treatment plant project. Both of those are at USDA, the plans and specifications are. They're currently reviewing the larger plant project, which will take probably a few weeks for them to get through because it's, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of paper there.
Yeah.
Um, and then once they're done with that, then they'll review the Rainy Street, uh, plans. And then at that point, we should be good to bid both of those projects. The intent is to bid both around the same time so that we'll get the results in around the same time. And then we'll be able to start construction of those, uh, again, about around the same time, so. Um, that should be coming to you guys, uh, hopefully in the next month or two. And then, of course, the last job, and I won't jump ahead too much here, but the last project that's on here is the smaller project that we broke off from using some of the other CDBG, CDBG funds that we were not able to utilize on this trunk rehab job. We're using that to do a small portion of what we needed to do with the wastewater treatment plant. So we've used some of those funds and broken off as a separate project. And part of the reason we separated it completely from the larger job was, uh, with CDBG funds that you have to use the federal wage rates and, um, which drives some of the cost up. So, um, in order to keep the larger job with just USDA funds, now that I'm not being confusing here, we, uh, kept that, the bulk of that work separate and then just a small portion of the larger job is being funded by CDBG and USDA. So, and then I'll, I'll wait to.
Yeah, he, with the bid award recommendation, he'll come back out.
Yeah, yeah. Um, any questions on any of the work that, uh, is coming up or has gone on at this point?
What you say to work that you're putting into?
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely, glad to do it. Thank you.
And I, on the first part of that too, I was watching the news this afternoon and it was showing that the Nashville area is over five inches over last year's rain totals already right now.
Hmm.
So to your point, that's what's held it up.
Exactly.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mount Pleasant gas system report.
Mayor and Commissioners, there's not a report this month, everything's running smoothly.
We need a motion?
No.
Okay. Alright, number 11, new business. A, ordinance 2021-1073, this is a first reading. An ordinance to convert Clark Avenue and Shoffner Avenue into one-way streets in the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and describe it more accurate, accurately within the body of this ordinance.
So Mayor and Commissioners, this was in front of the Planning Commission, um, May 11th, and it was approved, approved by the Planning Commission because we're changing the flow of traffic, uh, the Planning Commission that, uh, is basically over our transportation plan, has to approve or not approve. And they did approve, and most of you all got this, uh, report from MTS engineer John Clarkson that, uh, after they met with, uh, Chief Michael Hay, they did their own study and they agree that they think that Shoffner needs to be one-way going east where you enter from Main Street, and Clark would be one-way going west where you exit onto Main Street. And we, I know the chief's been out there and he's measured all the streets and none of them are wide enough to legally be streets these days, but that, that's what's made it really difficult to have two-way traffic on those streets.
I made the comment that Shoffner is not wide enough to get a motorcycle down.
Right.
Hate to say it, but it's just true. Alright, this is the first reading, any comments, questions from the commission? Now I'll entertain a motion.
That's what citizens have to.
Not yet. It's just first reading.
Oh. Mayor, I'll make a, make a motion for ordinance 2021-1073 on first reading to convert Clark Avenue and Shoffner Avenue into, to one-way streets.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any other discussion? Yeah. Alright, we have a, uh, we have a motion, we have a second, no other, no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. B, ordinance 2021-1074, again, this is a first reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2020-1055, said ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, providing an effective date.
And Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this will be the last budget amendment for the year with the final reading being in June.
Yeah.
And you all should have gotten, um, from Loretta over the weekend, a budget amendment, kind of a bullet point list.
Yes.
Um, that, that will change between now and June as we close out and, and get, and we've had some, uh, new purchase orders recently, but that's where we are as of now. But happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Kater Loretta? Again, this is a first reading. Think, how many do we have for the year three?
We usually do two, we did a third one this year because of the COVID money.
Because of COVID money.
Usually do one at the end of December, for six months and then year end.
I remember when I first started, it was every month, literally. Entertain a motion, if no further discussion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-1074.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. C, ordinance 2021-1075, an ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2021 and ending June 30th of 2022.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, the same, you should have gotten an email, uh, with just budget bullet points, um, that we just wanted to highlight for you. And, um, I'd like you all to think about, uh, the school tax money. So the way the budget is written right now, the, the money is going to the schools as it did last year. Uh, if we want to change that, I think we should discuss that in the study session at the June meeting on your thoughts on that. But, but right now, it's, it's budgeted the same as it was last year, the money is going to the schools. And we can make that change in June if we want to.
How much is that money?
It is about, a, a year, it's about 114, 116,000 dollars, yeah.
Yeah, also, point out with that is that we don't have the final, oh, tax rate yet, so.
We don't, we should be getting that, in fact, we're late not having it, but by the June meeting, for sure, we'll have that from Bobby Daniels.
But we're, we were the only city that done that.
Correct.
That is correct, we are the only city that, when that passed, for the specific reason of the money going to the schools, and we were the only city that upheld it.
Correct. And then this, this budget does not include a tax increase?
This budget does not include a tax increase.
The board did express extreme gratitude, uh, to us.
The school board?
Mm-hmm. The school board did it at the last meeting. And we're very thankful for the, I think it was just a partial year we sent last year, wasn't it, 37,000?
It was just a partial year.
Yeah, but even at that, they were very grateful. And, uh, we called it out at the meeting and. Very great.
I, I would appreciate it if everybody would get with Kate, let her know your thoughts on that because, uh, that money could be very, very. on that because that money could be very, very important to us in this next year, particularly with all the projects we're going to have going on. I think it's something we better really hard, take hard and long, consider on it. I hate to be that way about it, but understanding that we are the only community that. I just think that that's.
I understand where you're coming.
I'm just gonna be quiet. I'm just stopping right there.
My question is, when we, when it was in, um, uh, on the voting docket, was it not on there that it was going to be used for school funds?
Yes, but the cities had to, after the vote was taken, the cities had to pass a resolution saying that their intent is to pass this on. They didn't do that. What happened was after it passed, and it was time for cities to prepare their budgets, the pandemic hit, and they all got afraid that they weren't going to have revenue from sales tax, and they decided they weren't going to be able to afford to give the city that, um, give that half of 2.1.
And I understand that, but I also understand that, you know, our campaign forced people to go out and vote for it because it was going to be used for schools, and none of the cities are doing it for schools. So, I mean, I'm kind of lost here.
Yeah.
I think we all were when we found out none of the rest of the communities were doing it.
And nobody called them out on it. That's the thing. It's nobody, like, there was never any.
And, and I think a lot of.
I'm calling them out because, I mean, that's what we told people when we asked them to go and vote for it.
I think a lot of people thought once the.
We did it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, I know, I mean, I know we paid hours last year, but I'm saying.
Other ones didn't.
I, I think a lot of people thought once the tax passed, it was automatic, that each city has to pass a resolution.
Right, because that's the way it was actually told to us, that, you know, once you voted for it and it passed, that's the way it was automatically going to be then. All of a sudden, it was like it's not.
Big time, I knew that in the.
Probably in hindsight. Yeah. And, go ahead.
I have one other, I guess, question, and I tried to look through that as much as I could, you know? But I know you brought up about the, the equipment, you know, which I was brought up, I think, two or three years ago also. Was that put in the budget this time?
The trash truck?
No, not the trash truck, the. No, no, to, I guess, you know, he had some kind of equipment that was a lot better than the cold patch that you.
Yeah, I followed up on that with Steve, and it, it, it might do a little bit better than the cold patch, but it really wouldn't be worth it.
But I knew the mayor also made a statement, you know, to look at that, and I didn't see it in the.
They did. I asked about three or four weeks ago, I asked Kate to get with Steve, and they talked about it, and they just, I don't think it's right now. It's. From what I get, the decision was right now is not the time.
It didn't seem like. Well, it does, it's not going to do, it's still a temporary fix. It's still cold patching. It might be able to do a wider area and leave a flatter surface, which is beneficial, but not for hundreds of thousands of dollars for equipment. That was in that conversation with Steve.
I just knew it was brought up, and I didn't see it, and I was just.
Right. I should have, I should have shared that I had that conversation with him a few weeks ago.
Because I did, I asked Kate to get back with him, and let's just see. Here's what I would ask that each.
Just one more thing before, with the school referendum, you also last year voted in an agreement to just do it for one year.
Right. That's why it has to be.
If you decided to give that money or not give the money, we would do it the same way, either by agreement or resolution for one year, two years, three years, whatever you want.
Either way, we need to do a resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you don't want to do it, you just let it go?
No, we have to do a resolution either way because what we passed is only good for one year. Yeah.
It's got to be a record. One other thing I would ask that everybody do as well, please, go through your schedule of nonprofits and others. They did a great job of providing us with the material for this. And please get with Kate and let her know your thoughts on each one of those line items, please.
Because those are in the budget unless we need to remove them.
That's right. So please just give her your thoughts, and then, again, just goes directly to Kate, and then we'll get a poll as to kind of which way it went with each one of them.
I'm good, Kate.
One down.
So anyway, any other discussion whatsoever on our budget? It is, I want to again thank Kate and Loretta and Philip, as Philip got in on it quite a bit this year. I want to thank all the department heads. Each of you made your requests, and it was very good to see what we saw. Some of you even went out two or three years on what we're looking at going down the road, and thank you for that as far as equipment and that type of stuff goes. There is some money in there this year because we have a new IT department that is paying off for us, but we've got some catch-up to do there that we can see. So I still think it's a very good budget, no tax increases. We're trying to do the very best job we can as being stewards of everybody's money. And this whole commission needs to be thanked for that as well, so.
And that, you know, instead of what you're saying, Mayor, you know, going out, you know, years ahead, you know, just being, you know, on the Mount Pleasant Power System board, it, it does make, it does make a difference.
Yeah.
Absolutely. You need to be, you need to know what you're going to be facing in the future.
Right.
And actually.
And we used to not do that.
No.
I mean, here.
Yeah.
No. Sure didn't. So we're putting some, um, we're putting some, uh, gaps in there now. We're going to understand more about what we've gotten at the next year and the next, and that's important, particularly when you're talking about planning for a whole city.
Yeah, when you're talking about big, big items.
And we've got some big ones coming down the road. I mean, we've got some big stuff happening this year. So any other discussion about our budget? It is, again, the first reading.
Mayor, I make a motion in favor of ordinance 2021-1075 for a three.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. I think we should do roll call because it is a pretty big item, please, ma'am.
Phil White?
Yes.
Jacqueline Brambeer?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Eric Carvey?
Yes.
Willie Alderson?
Yes.
Five Seagrove.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Felt like that was important. It's a big number. D, wastewater influent screening project bid award.
Mayor and Commissioners, Matthew Johnson just spoke towards this, but we did accept bids and got three bids, and I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Kate. As Kate mentioned, we did get three bids for this project that I mentioned just a few minutes ago. The low bid was $385,000, BH Craig Construction. Barge has worked with BH Craig on some other projects. We've had good, or I've had good experience with them in the past, so I don't think there's any concerns as far as BH Craig and their performance on this job. I did want to mention our estimate, our estimate on the cost going into the bid was $585,000, so this bid came in quite a bit lower than what we were expecting. And I'm not sure how much you folks are aware of some of the bidding that's gone on over the last year or so, but it's very volatile, especially right now. We're seeing, especially with like PVC pipe, for instance, there's been some contractors I've talked to, said they can't even get a delivery date.
Right.
And they're not going to get PVC pipe. Luckily, in this particular job, we don't have a lot of pipes, so it shouldn't be a concern. We'll have some more pipe on the larger plant job, but we do have some options. It's going to be further out in the future, so maybe that will alleviate some of the concerns there, because it will come down eventually, but I think it's going to take some time. And then, if it, if it does become a problem, like say on some of the future jobs, we can maybe look at some alternative pipe materials to, in order to get the job done. But with this project specifically, again, it's, the bid came in well under what we were expecting, which is good. We submitted the bid results to both CD, to ECD and to USDA. We have not heard back from them as of yet, so I don't know what the resolution exactly says, but it.
It's just a bid award.
It's just a bid award?
Okay. So we won't move forward until we get.
Okay.
Obviously.
Well, okay, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, your other option would be to have a resolution that says contingent upon USDA and ECD approval, but I mean, what you're doing is fine, too.
Okay, yeah, because we're not moving forward if they don't approve it.
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Bottom line.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's the bottom line.
They kind of control the show.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They got the purse guns.
And also, we should hear back from USDA relatively soon. I don't know if you folks might have heard, but ECD lost one of their grant analysts or administrators about two or three weeks ago at our attack call, so I think they're a little bit overloaded right now, and so they're kind of, they're trying to get through all, all the other grants that they're getting requests from right now. So as soon as we get word, we'll pass that along to you folks, that you can, you know, with that.
So the recommendation from the city is going to be to award the bid to BH Craig?
BH Craig.
And it's not going to change?
When I saw that, I think it ain't changing.
I don't remember the exact date. I think it's, it's either 90 or 120 days, I believe.
So it's good for that long.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, you guys too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we have the bid. Entertain a motion to accept. Maybe we accept the wastewater project bid.
BH Craig.
BH Craig, yeah. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's keep saving 200 everywhere we get.
For sure.
Yeah. All right, E, fire hydrant bid award.
Mayor and Commissioners, we did advertise this in the paper, and we did receive two bids, and one is Greg Roberts, who we are familiar with, working with, and it was $1,400 per hydrant, and the second bid was consolidated pipe, which was $1,941.85 per hydrant. You all should have received these bids last week from Loretta, and our recommendation is to go with Greg Roberts at the $1,400 per hydrant.
Any questions or comment from the commission? How many we got?
How many hydrants?
Oh. How many fire hydrants do we have in total?
So over a 10-year period, probably about six.
Okay, cool.
But how many fires, hydrants total?
For this bid?
No, for the city. How many do we have?
Oh, 240.
Yeah. So, and, and we.
We won't be doing them all.
No.
No, 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 no.
We haven't been keeping up with them, and we're, this is our.
You got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
You got to start somewhere.
And I think the bid, the bid is going for two years.
One year, yeah, I was just looking at that. All right, any more conversation or questions from the commission? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion in favor of Greg Roberts for $1,400 for the fire hydrant bid award.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, splash pad bathroom bid award.
Mayor and Commissioners, we did advertise this in the paper, and we received one bid. It is a good bid, but the submitter is not a licensed general contractor, and we'll have to have a licensed general contractor, so we are going to ask you to reject the bid, and we're going to re-advertise it, and we're going to be knocking on the doors of a few general contractors, asking them to, to submit a bid so that we could, this person could be a sub for a general contractor, but we have to have a general contractor over the project. So I'm just asking you to reject the bids.
Is this for insurance reasons? Kate or is?
State law.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, but I mean, that's, he's not insured, right? Is that what?
He has no license.
Yeah.
That's what, okay, that's what.
And then, if the insurance is there, if he ain't got a license, it doesn't matter. All right. Entertain a motion to reject this bid. I saw a move. We have a motion to reject. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. G, College Street gas line replacement bid award, and Kate and I discussed this this morning.
You should have something from Pat, Pat Thornton Davis in front of you.
Yeah, in front of you.
Yeah. So, Mayor and Commissioner, this is, this gas line is on College Street, and it goes from First Avenue to Adams. And since I've been here, I have heard from previous employee Tony Chapman and others with this gas line. It's old and it's not in good shape. We involved the engineers and advertised for it. We anticipated it being in the range of 50 to 55,000 to replace it. Bids came in at 91, obviously just higher than we anticipated, so we, we took a step back to determine if we should put this off because of just the, the general economy, and as you see, as Matthew Johnson said, bids are volatile. So we had our expert gas consultant come out here and take a look at the pipe, and he got on the conference call with Keith and I and talked about different things that we could do to buy some time on this gas line, and I simply asked him, I said, are these just all Band-Aids, and is this pipe in that bad a shape? And he said it's in that bad a shape. So I don't feel comfortable putting that off any longer, and I feel like we need to move forward and get that gas line replaced.
Well, I mean, our gas company is in good enough shape that, you know, we can do that.
That's what we talked about today. I'll just tell you all the conversation Kate and I had is, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not putting Band-Aids on something, it's a stitch.
Right.
Yeah. And that's all we're going to be doing, and we need to get this done. And then, the other part of it is, Mike, as you said, our, our gas fund is in excellent shape. I mean, we got $4 million in there. I never thought we could say that, but we do.
So the recommendation from us, the staff, is going to be that we award this bid to TJ Construction out of Florence, Alabama, and their bid is $91,273.5.
So any questions for Kate on this?
Five cents.
Know it's a little higher than we wanted to spend, but I can also say that it's.
Oh, the second bid was.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the second bid was 105.
Another 60 grand.
So just all over the map?
Yep.
I don't know how they can break that fall apart, but they are.
I think they don't want to work.
And this is going to, and this is going to consist of replacing the whole gas line?
Yes, from, from First Avenue to Adams, under College Street.
My gas bill ain't going up.
No.
Is that to be sure?
Has nothing to do with it. Rates are not changing. We're using fund balance.
It's still better to get that, that explosion or something.
Yeah, absolutely. We have a motion for Ms. Willie to accept.
A second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. H, developer, developer agreement for the benefit of the city contingent upon the Planning Commission.
Mayor and Commissioners, I brought this in because all of you have seen this book with the pretty pictures of after the downtown revitalization, what we, what we're, what Mayor Commissioners, I brought this in because all of you have seen this book with the pretty pictures of after the downtown revitalization, what we're looking at. Years ago, when these drawings were made, this parking lot here, aside from the grill, when this drawing was with this big gazebo and lots of planting and seating arrangements, the property owner preferred to have the parking. So we dropped the idea of having this, even though our architects and engineers have been saying all along, this is the southern entrance to downtown. You want to have some, something that looks really nice when you- So we just kind of dropped it for a while. We were not aware that they were gonna start the construction on the Hamilton Building as quick as they did. The Hamilton Building is directly tied to the parking lot because they can't do the renovations to the Hamilton Building without the parking. So our engineers sat down with their engineers and showed them our design for a parking lot where they would lose two spots only. And they liked our engineer, C T Consultants, design better than their own that did it for Evers Construction. So now they are gonna draw up new plans for this amended parking lot, and they are gonna have to pay for that, which is they're paying twice now to have the parking lot drawings made. And the city is getting out of it what it wants, which is a corner that we can make an entrance to our community. And in exchange for that, we will waive some fees, like for taps down the road, so that it balances out that, that no one, that we both come out whole, the private owner and the city. And so I wanted to share that with you because after this goes in front of the planning commission next month, I'm assuming it will be approved, that we will put that, Cory will reduce that down in writing, and then we'll tell them that, you know, as a developer, you've agreed to do this and pay for this, and the city in turn will pay for this. And in my mind, we get something we've been asking for for about five years, so wanted to share that with you. The cost that we're talking about is about sixty-five, I'll tell you exactly what it is, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's not, it's not a lot of money, but it's just the way we do it. I think it needs to be fair and equitable, and I think that's the best approach. Want to add anything, Cory?
No, mainly the reason that this is being brought to you at all is because the private owner already had their plans approved, and the city said, well, this is kind of what we'd prefer. So because the city is getting what it wants, we're proposing that you agree later on to waive some tap fees. And this development agreement that Kate mentioned is something that I think y'all will be seeing several more of.
Yes, as we, as the developers come in and want to do residential, we're gonna be saying, you're gonna do this, we can do this for you, and you'll see that. I already have by ordinance the ability to waive these tap fees or the way it's ordered in the best interest of the city, but I want you all to be aware, because this is something we're going back to the planning commission, asking them to approve new plans, and I just thought you all would want to be involved in knowing that's what went on.
And the other thing you'd be asking them to waive is the application fee with the planning commission.
To go in front of the planning commission for a second time.
Again, because they've already got it approved, they're coming back and doing this because the city would like it, too.
Yes.
I can tell you that in my time here, I've already been involved in this once at the request of the city in regards to the judicial building that we have. And it turned out that they hit it to, in order to get parking and whatever thing we needed down there, we did the same with the guy that owned that property down there. So this would not be the first time that we've done this.
Absolutely.
And it enabled us to have the judicial center where it is because of what they were, they agreed to do with us. And it was Habitat.
Yeah, and they, the private developer then bought that property.
It was a mess. That property was donated to Habitat for Humanity.
Yes.
Habitat wound up selling it. Don't know, I'm not gonna get into all that, but then it had to be done in order to get that judicial center we need.
Thomas Reeves, I think.
Thomas Reeves.
So I just want basically for the commission to vote that they approve that we proceed in this direction.
Just to let you know, we have done this before. I move that we move forward with it. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last thing we have is general comments from citizens, and Ms. Johns, you have signed up.
I'd like to say good evening to those I haven't spoken to.
Good evening.
Hello.
I have a question I need to ask Mayor White and Ms. Kate. When we left last month, you made a statement that Mount Pleasant didn't have a street department, right?
No, 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 no.
We have what's called a community services department.
Community service.
I was gonna tell you, I checked into that, and before I came on this commission, it was changed over to community service department. They put the street in with community service. I did follow up on it, like I told you, I lived.
And then we talked at length at the strategic planning session on creating more of a street department with equipment and staff.
To call it that.
Now, some of the stuff that we have right now is, it's taking street aid or whatever.
State street aid.
State street aid.
Right.
That's, that's the state account. That's what they call it.
Yeah.
Now, how long has this been like this?
It's way before I got here.
Way before I got here.
Over six years ago.
Yeah.
And I've been coming to all the meetings, and last month was the first time I ever heard about it. Some things you should know, it's not told.
Well, that's been in place for over seven years.
It could be over twelve years. I just don't know.
Yeah, we know it's been that long.
But again, we used everything from state street aid, right, for the most part.
Correct. But I guess the point being that to really truly be a street department, if you look at something like the city of Columbia, they have the equipment, they have the trained personnel to be a street department. We're just patching things as we can. We don't have the budget for a street department right now, or the equipment.
Now, I'm gonna tell how old I am, and during that time, it was some machines here that they were grading the roads. Even before Valley Road got in city limit, they bought the road grader and covered up the holes in Valley Road. Okay. Why, well, what did they do with the old machine?
I wouldn't have, not have any idea.
No idea. I wasn't on the commission at that time.
But you was round here just like I was, weren't you?
Uh, that many, you, Elliot, that, seven years ago, eight years ago, I was here.
Okay.
The road grader, it didn't belong to Ray Floyd at that time, did it?
I wouldn't even know, David.
She carries.
Yeah, I don't think-
Well, we had them. We had them.
I think it was Ray Floyd.
But now you have more money in the city budget and treasure now than we had back then, and our streets is just as ragged as a barrel of crap.
I won't disagree with you there in tough shape.
And over there, and Steve, I want to congratulate you catching that hole right down the street from my house.
On Valley? You want on Valley at, in South Florida?
But you even missed the motor.
Oh, there's plenty to go around.
This is some mess up on that. It's the street that's running down Railroad Street to the train station. Who's responsible for that street? It, that is the worst street. I thought Valley Road was bad.
Yeah, the center of it is bad.
I mean, that street, it used to be the smoothest street going to the train station.
The one, no, that's East Cooper, down through there where I, where I was complaining about right in the center of the road. It looks like it's just going crazy any minute now.
I mean, it's, it's, it's bad.
Before a while, that gate was open and trucks was coming out of there, and I do know that they locked the gate back, and trucks aren't going down there now, but it doesn't matter because roads tore up.
Right.
But it's in bad shape.
The conversation that the commission had back in April is long-term to fund things like paving roads and a stormwater program. We're talking millions and millions of dollars, and that's, that's what we were talking about just a few minutes ago, about looking at long-term and finding the funding sources to do things like that. The very first meeting we had, I think at Ms. Alderson's request, we shared with you that it costs two million dollars to pave mill and pave one mile.
Now, where do you get two million dollars from, Kate?
That's what the city of Columbia just paid in their last contract.
Well, see, Columbia has, have more going for them than Mount Pleasant has going, and you expect them to have that kind of money.
They just, they had a contract, and that's what they paid on their contract.
But if that includes sewer and everything, Kate, or-
No, that's just milling and paving.
Okay, I talked to a guy this week, he's in, let's see, what is it, volunteer paving. He says he can do three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one mile.
Well, all I did was ask Columbia, because I knew they were working on James Campbell.
He said, of course, you know, milling, you know, it would cost, you know-
No, this is milling and paving.
And the problem he got is-
He said, even at that, it wouldn't be no more than a million dollars.
And so that's what, it was, it was two million for a mile, and Columbia sent me all their bids. They got bids from four different contractors.
I mean, if the commission and you want to look into it, I'll give you the man's, you know, or volunteer, you know, and-
Well, as soon as we have a funding source and are ready to move forward, I wouldn't, I'm willing to talk to anybody. Of course, it will have to be bid, but-
And the milling is what's so terribly expensive.
And that's what causes so many problems by not milling.
That's the problem.
We've lost our curves.
We've lost all our curves. We've lost all our stormwater eaten, created.
We probably hadn't got that many tops of asphalt on top of top on top, because we hadn't been doing that much paving.
Even when the state paves Main Street, they don't mill, and so that's why you'd lost the curb there.
I mean, you might, but I'm talking about overall town. I mean, we're not paving, paving, paving.
No, but Haylong has very little curb left, but yeah, if you look at street by street.
But I mean, you know, whenever we paved it, it probably, it's probably, you know, like it, like it was then, you know, we just didn't have enough anywhere to begin with.
Well, since y'all writing grants and things, is it possible you can get a grant to kind of patch up the streets until you can do better?
I mean, we're always looking for funding sources and-
I thought you said Steve was doing a good job.
Well, he did stop up the pothole down next to my house. Because then when I go through there, I had to put on brakes and really get out and push the car.
Trust me, Ms. Johns, we're looking at every avenue we can.
Yes, it's, and you expect people to come down and be residents of Mount Pleasant, and what have you got to offer them?
They're coming.
They're coming.
Well, now, I'm gonna be out there and stop them and tell, y'all don't know what y'all did, and they too come in here with these ragged streets and all, you know.
Wait a minute, we hoping we're gonna make money on them, too, Ms. Johns?
No, no. Mm-mm. They know. But that's what I wanted to know. How long has it been since we've been without a street department?
Well, I did check into that, and another thing with the streets, and I'm not taking up room because I had two flats that I was not happy about, but, you know, I can't see. Anyway, another thing is, until we actually get all the sewage and stuff fixed, it's not gonna do a lot of good to invest in that kind of money until we get that done. Because they're gonna be tearing them back up.
But in sewer lines or whatever.
And that's supposed to be part of what we, what, that's supposed to be part of what's coming. We'll downtown in some of it, but until we get that-
But there might be some streets that, you know, that you, that don't have.
Because nobody knows the way the sewage line goes. It just goes some kind of way.
And then another thing, you're talking about the gas line, and is that the only gas line that's in bad shape, or have the other part of town gas lines been checked?
My understanding is that's the worst gas line we have in the city.
The worst of the worst.
Think you need to come to Valley Road?
They ain't got a Valley Road.
He's not in the gas department. All right.
Well, we've always had a street department. It might have been state street aid, but we've always had a street department.
Then you know I have always, always knew a street department.
Already.
I'm only seventy-five.
Hey, I'm not far behind you.
Flash, Mary Granberg, anything?
Uh, you know, I'm always fucking someone with your prop, what properties do. I appreciate the fire department, the police department, what you done in carrying out Mr. Bullock's funeral service. Y'all done a wonderful job, and I thank you.
Yeah.
He was a great man. He influenced my life.
Can you speak if you are on?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll allow it tonight. Yes, ma'am. But I need you to come up and state your name and your address, please.
I'm Walker Whitman, and I live at five oh six North Main Street in Mount Pleasant. I didn't speak up in reference to item number eleven because I have no problems with it. Although now, in order to get returned to my home, I will have to take Carpenter Street. Now, my question, though, is in reference to Daughner to Boykin, when you get ready to exit Boykin onto Carpenter, will there be a stop sign? It's just a question that I have.
Our chief of police is shaking his head yes.
Okay, great. Okay, that's great. And also, in terms of Carpenter Street, Carpenter Street is lined with children. And so I don't, right now, I don't know what the speed limit is going up and going, they'll be going up and down Carpenter. So I don't know what the speed limit is, but I would hope that with you changing in terms of item number eleven, with people having to definitely, you know, go up Carpenter more perhaps. Now, if you look at the speed limit and take into consideration the children, thank you very much.
And Ms. Whitman, I have an extra copy of the little study that was done. I'm happy to share it with you.
Ms. White, the speed limit is twenty-five, and I had talked to Chief Hay about putting some speed signs down there.
Okay.
Because I've had complaints about that, and we did talk about that in the study section. He was gonna go down, get down and check on that, but-
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mike, anything?
Nothing.
Ms. Willie?
Nothing.
Eric?
Yes. Just to let the community know, we turned in our paperwork at the middle school to name the Mount Pleasant Middle School softball field after its creator, that's Andre Baker. And it will go before the board this summer. If, you know, the next step is we've got to raise the money to pay for the sign, somewhere around four thousand. We've got about ten percent of that started, so, you know. We can get the community behind this. It'd be a tremendous honor for, tremendous man.
What's the timing of the approval? What do you think?
They will vote on it this summer, like in the June meeting.
Okay.
And then my goal would be to have it up and ready so that the first home softball game in February, that was also his birth month. I can't think of a greater honor than to have the first home game, have as many community people there. Thank you to Bedford and Ms. Willie and Ms. Jackie for helping to serve on that committee. And I'm just proud for, for the Baker family, and he was a tremendous man, paid a lot of influence on a lot of people.
Sounds good.
The city also plans to be proclamation for Andre on that, whenever we do do that at the same time, to honor him for what all his done.
Yes.
Happy to.
Yeah, we'll be happy to. All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn. I so moved. Second, all those in favor? Got to catch them before they get out the door.